I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight and we certainly appreciate you coming. We've got a pretty good crowd here and several visitors and several things on our agenda. So we just want to welcome you here, thank you for coming tonight. At this time, I'm going to ask Brother Jack Carter to lead our invocation, then I might just lean that, lead us in our place to lead it. So let's pray and let Brother Jack Carter lead us in our place.
Lord, for this day, we give you thanks. I thank you for your worship, watching over us, and the folks of all for loving. I pray today, Lord, that you can make with us here this place. Lord, ask for your guidance, for our leader. I pray, Lord, that you can help them in the decisions they're making. Lord, just let me point at our duty to pray for. We ask for your guidance in all that we do, and we ask for your guidance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is a recommendation to approve the municipal bills. Have you had a chance to look over the bills and is there a motion to approve those municipal bills?
I make the motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the bills? On the favor, say aye. Next item on the agenda is a recommendation to approve the council's paddle bills. Have you had a chance to look over the bills and is there a motion to approve those municipal bills?
I make the motion, Brother Francis. I looked it on the law, overhand, and laid it out there before.
Is there a second? I'll second. Okay. Is there any discussion? On the favor, say aye. Next item on the agenda is a hearing for MRM Marketing 2013 business license. This is a recommendation to have a hearing on refunding the marketing's, MRM's business license and permanent spin license or reinstated license. At this time, we'll have a hearing on that and will you have representatives from this company?
Yes.
Would you like to come and speak to us?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Where do you want to stand?
Right there, you come in front of you when I give your microphone. That way you're right in here. I need to turn it off for you.
Do you want me to face everybody or?
Yes, sir. Or just people, wherever you want to sit.
Okay, I'll just stand right here. I'm really nervous and really sorry. Okay, hi. Well, I'm Rachel Quinn. My husband and I own MRM Marketing in Birmingham, Alabama. So first, I just want to thank you guys for giving us a chance to kind of represent our company and, you know, you can put a face to the name and kind of, I don't know, just that thanks for the chance to do that. Okay. Well, we've had our business in Birmingham, Alabama, my husband has for about eight years now. We have offices, we have an office in Rainbow City, Albertville, Huey Town, Priceville, and also one in Louisiana.
What do you also?
We sell Kirby vacuum cleaners. The way we sell our equipment is door-to-door. The Kirby company's been around for 105 years and the only way they've ever sold their product is through door-to-door advertising. We don't do it on the TV or the radio or anything like that, we just do it door-to-door. So we, you know, purchase the business licenses and go door-to-door and sell our product, which we've been doing that successfully, thank God, for the past eight years in Birmingham. Before that, we were in, he was in Louisiana, Kenner, Louisiana, until Katrina, and that's why he relocated to Birmingham. So that's how we wound up in Birmingham selling Kirby vacuum cleaners. But, let me see here, okay. So, like I said, we've been successfully doing it for the past eight years in Birmingham. It's getting, now, over the past year or so, like I said, I really want to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to speak even though I'm really nervous and sorry for me, but just because over the past year or so, we have had more trouble controlling negative, what do I want to say? Like, talk about the company just because of the social media. A lot of the complaints that, because I've been to other city hall meetings before this one and I've been trying to go around to the different cities and talk to the sheriff and let him know about our company and stuff, the biggest, the most complaints don't come from our customers, they come from the neighbors or people that don't answer the door or talk to us and don't set the appointment, but very rarely does any negative feedback ever come from the customer themselves. And if it does, then, you know, they have our office phone number, they have the company's phone number, and the complaint will come to our office immediately and then we can handle it. But the most complaints, like I said, come from the people that we don't even talk to. You know, and then they tell their neighbor or they, you know, go and post on Facebook or Twitter, whatever social media outlet they have to speak to the world, you know what I mean? So it just kind of, that's kind of what we're dealing with here now, I think. But I do want to apologize for any inconvenience that we've caused or anything like that, but we purchased the business licenses, you know, so we try to abide by every law that we know of and we try to do everything the right way and we want to be, obviously, we want to be in Birmingham for another eight years, 10 years, 20 years, Lord willing, whatever, so we don't want to do anything to jeopardize our company so, or our livelihood or anything like that, or the people that work for us. So, I mean, the complaints, we're just out here just trying to work, really, just, you know, knock on doors, set up appointments and show off the equipment, and there's nothing more to it than that, you know, so.
Well, the reason we're having here is because we have had complaints. We've had some city hall, I know the police departments had some, and I was here, and I know twice when I've had people come and say that the taxi that we're using, that particular person didn't like the way that, I don't know, I don't know exactly, maybe it's where they were talked to, maybe it's where they approached, or maybe it's where they come in the house or whatever, and that's the reason that we've had this hearing, is to decide whether or not to reinstate the license or permanently revoke the license.
Right.
And give anybody else a chance, and give you a chance, because we haven't met you before, I haven't met you before.
Yeah.
Court of Honor.
Yeah.
And I don't know if any other council members have any, but I know we have, and I know Jan has, and I know that Ronnie, our chief figure, has had some. So that's, that's the reason we have the hearing, is to try to sidewalk it.
Is it you and your husband who's selling them, or is it you have sales, sales license, whatever it is, so?
Yes, we have, yeah, salespeople.
Under your employment.
Yeah, salespeople that work for us. He'll go out and sell them every now and then, mostly now, we did for about five years, six years or so, to get the business off the ground, but now he works out of the office to do the daily operations, and I had a baby, so now I kind of work from home a little bit.
So how many years total have you all been in this business now? I know you said eight years in Birmingham, but all total?
In total, he's, he's been in the business in total for 13 years. And I've been in business in total for, 2019, eight years.
Have you had any other complaints in the other cities?
We have, and so I went to, like, Winfield, for example, I was just in Winfield two weeks ago for a city hall meeting, for the same thing, for the complaints, but all of the complaints from what the, from what they had told me were coming from, not from the customers themselves, but from the people that we don't talk to. So I was thinking of a few different ways that we could still work in this, in the city, because we've done business here before and we could, I don't know, what we could do to make it so you guys would get less complaints when we work, because obviously we don't want to work here if it's going to annoy everybody, you know what I mean? Like, we don't want it to be like that.
And we don't need it?
Yeah, yeah, we don't want to bother you guys.
We can have a lot of complaints because it's not good for us or you.
Yeah, do you try and hear your salespeople?
We do.
Do you have a time in session that how they're supposed to act and all that?
We do, um, let me see, I'm sorry. We do, we trade, yeah, we have a four-day training for them, and it's to show them how to use the, you know, obviously use the equipment and how to talk to customers and maintain, because they're the face of the company, so we want them to be the best that they can be to give, represent the company well. But some people unfortunately, like, unfortunately, some people don't have as much tact, yes, as you would hope. And if we do have an issue with a certain person, we find out, we get rid of them immediately. We don't support that or promote like aggressive, pushy, anything like that, we don't, because it's not good for our business. It's, it would, the only way we stay in business is if we sell Kirby vacuum cleaners, so we're not trying to do anything that's going to jeopardize that, you know.
Does, does the representative that was here in Hamilton, did he or she also go to Winfield? Is it the same person that has had a problem or?
Um, I'm really not sure. I know we had, I believe the representative that you had, we had a problem with here, we, we got rid of him, because he had like, he came here twice and got complaints both times, so obviously, he wasn't doing well at what he's supposed to do well at, so we got rid of him. But everybody that we do have going out, every salesperson we do have, we do a background check on them, we do it through Alacore, which tells us anything, just for peace of mind for people, we do it through Alacore, which tells us any cases pending, anything like that, and then we go through ADP, which is our payroll company, and they do the national sex offender search and we do the nationwide search. So if they're not, if they didn't always live in Alabama, they do everything, and we do Alacore for here because with ADP, not everything pulls up in Alabama, because it's more of a private.
Okay, so the person that was here in Hamilton is no longer with you?
No, because he had, he had two complaints on him while he was here that we heard about, you know, so we had to get rid of him, obviously, he just wasn't.
Have you got somebody else work in this area yet?
We do not, we told our managers not to yet until we could figure out what the, you know, what we were going to do here. Do you guys have more, any more questions? I mean, I would like for you guys not to revoke the business license, you know, we're...
Well, it's not something that we...
Yeah, it's something you guys do.
Want to do, encourage to do, because, you know, we own business, we encourage business.
Yeah.
But there's things that we can't tolerate, and that, all those complaints, it's not going to work.
Right.
Period.
Right.
If you've taken steps to stop that, then I would say it'd be okay, but if we get any more, then it's, we're going to stop it.
Okay.
We're going to revoke it.
Okay.
Because we just, you know, it's not retarded.
Right.
And I know you don't mean to, you can't get what somebody's doing when they're going around selling, if you're not with them, and they're not, they don't have the personality that you do or the sales presentation that you might make, but...
But we still should be responsible for that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Because some people don't, you know, going door-to-door is a tough job, and it's tough sales, very tough sales.
Yeah.
And, you know, some neighbors make it up, so.
Right.
Y'all have any comments?
I don't want to shut anybody down, it would hurt to do it on a trial basis.
Chief Bigg, would you like to speak?
Yes, sir. If you're going to reinstate a business license in this matter, I like it, the hours that they operate, the aggressive, they call it persuasive tactics that they use to be addressed, but the complaints, a lot of complaints that we get is the hours of visitation that they're doing, two reasons, and late at night, the dark hours, just after dark, just at this age.
What we can do, or what I can have...
I've not met with any of these people.
Yeah, what I can have are, I don't know if this sounds good to you guys, but when they're, we started doing this in a lot of cities, is they can call or come down in person and just let you know that they'll be working in the city today, so if people do call, then you know that it is us and, you know, we have a license and stuff, and you can kind of give them the guidelines of what you want them to do, because obviously, we're in your city, so we'll bend to whatever you guys need us to do so we can successfully...
Well, I personally would like to see it daylight hours.
Right.
And I know that sometimes you have a better chance of catching people at home at night, but we have a lot of widowing in this town and widowers and so-and-so, so, of course, our first and foremost concern is their protection, and I'd rather see it just daylight hours. Now, that's just my own personal opinion, I don't know, it breaks all the fun, but from later.
Well, it shouldn't be a problem at the time, Jan.
Yeah, no, no, no. Because I, like, we normally stop knocking around eight o'clock is what we tell them to go, so, yeah, that'll work. Okay, thank you.
Jan, is there anything to vote on that?
Yeah, not if you're not going to vote.
Okay, okay. Or we'll try a little bit longer, and then continues the next one over. You don't want to go big?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Okay, we'll do our, we'll handle it. Thank you.
I mentioned to them that are in this, the representatives that are in this area, that we had a big complaint regarding this and that we're on top of it, as you will, I'm sure will be.
Okay, yeah, definitely, of course.
Okay, Jan, it's your turn.
Are these the people going around trying to sell Kirby vacuum cleaners?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I want to tell you, I don't appreciate them coming to my house, banging on my door, me going to the door and telling them I'm not interested. Well, I said, "I'm not interested," bang, bang, bang. I said, "I'm not interested," so I just shut my door and locked it, so your salesman told my neighbor that I was very rude. I said, "He's very lucky." Usually, I have a thirty-eight in my hand, and I am not kidding. That is the truth.
I'm so sorry, I apologize.
And so, I do not appreciate it one bit when you tell someone, "No," do they not understand our English? I don't like it one bit.
Right.
So, yeah, I thought I should have stayed home tonight.
Don't get around them, it'll be all right.
Sorry.
Yes, sir.
I thought, I understood years ago that door-to-door selling was outlawed.
I don't think so.
No, not at all?
Well, to stop all the confusion and everything, like this lady here has to go with, or maybe others, why can't they do it by appointment?
Do you want me to answer?
Yes, you.
Oh, yeah, that, we do, that's how we set our appointments, are by door-to-door.
No, 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 no.
Oh, like telephone appointments?
Drop them a card in the mail, and if you're interested or guess, then send it back, Because nowadays, door-to-door, individual, I'm like, I'm like her, I wouldn't appreciate if somebody comes banging on my door, that would upset me bad. And nowadays, you don't know how to take people, you don't know who to trust, and I'm like her, and I'm a man, I probably wouldn't hit you at the door with a gun.
Well, I'm along the line, and I have to cut your jammies, and believe me when I tell you I can cut your jammies. I just don't appreciate it, and I think it's very rude when you tell somebody at one time that she'd be alone. That's all I got to say.
But if you got, if you got an appointment by the resident, if you got an appointment, then you know that you've got a possible sale, you know, somebody's interested.
I think Rachel has addressed that, and she knows exactly how we feel and how you feel, so they've got a chance to make it work, and if they don't, we're not looking to, that's fair.
Yeah, that's definitely fair, yeah, completely.
Okay. All right, let's go. Next one, a recommendation to create a HAMMington Avenue Plaza committee and appoint the following people to serve on the committee. This would be Braylon Jackson, Brendel Jackson, Stephen Devers, Ronnie Miller, and Jan Williams. And this is the big committee to oversee the Avenue Plaza that we're working on now. Jan's handling all the funds when they bring to her and the checks and everything, so this is the committee that we put together that we feel like is needed to make this work, so I'm here, motion to approve this recommendation.
When we start, we deliver today.
Yeah. Along the south highway or the south fence, from the school, you'll see the bricks where they fix and start working. Very, very soon. So I have a motion to approve this. Have a second.
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion on this? On the favor, say aye. Number six, a recommendation to accept a low quote of $12,242 from Greenfield Turf and Tractor Field Drag, the payment from the Racetrack Center's funds. We had this on the agenda a couple of weeks ago, and actually only had like one or two prices, but after checking on this for quite some time, there's several John Deere dealers in Alabama, they all actually get it through the same company, you know, the same person that is through Atlanta, eventually running through Murkishboro, Tennessee. This is something that we need to replace over there, it's, it's still working, but it's, the shaft has bent, it's been repaired a few times, we do have the money in the RIT fund to pay for it, and I'd like to see us do that. Any other discussion, we can go ahead and make a motion, second, then we can talk some more if you want to. Do we have a recommendation or a motion to accept this recommendation?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, great. Is there any other discussion on this piece of equipment? On the favor, say aye. Any opposed? Number seven is a recommendation to approve resolution number 2013-1-4-1 authorizing foot wood mills and cablewood to provide professional engineering services for the CDG grant for the assisted living facility. There's going to be an assisted living facility built down behind the AT&T store on National Avenue, and this is a resolution to approve them doing this work. They've already been working on it for quite some time, but the reason it's been put off was the company wasn't for sure they were coming, so we had to ask for an extension on the grant from the DECA at least twice, and now they extended it twice, and extended, I think, the third time, but they're supposed to start this month, and we'll see that built down there, it's going to actually create 24 full-time jobs and be quite a bit of use for us. It's a very, very nice living facility that are behind, like I said, what AT&T store that's on National Avenue. And this is just a recommendation to approve letting them, their engineers, like I say, have already done it, the reason it's been extended because they wouldn't, they didn't come, you know, one they said they would, so we had an extension from the DECA, and this is just doing something now, to make sure that it's, the following procedure is what it's doing.
This is the sign of a company that's built a facility in Winfield.
They're building one in Winfield, one in Thetan, same exact...
Oh, one in Thetan.
Are those still continuing?
Those do continue. Yeah, I know Winfield is.
We're sure that they're coming.
They're, for sure, they're coming. Well, I talked to Heath Reed today and he said, you know, he didn't say any reason why they were, I talked to him about four o'clock, and I talked to him again about five o'clock.
So this money's coming from where?
This company?
The company or the money?
Food, not to exceed seventeen thousand.
That is going to be coming, Jan, you can address this.
It's the CDPG grant and the...
Their parts will be paid for.
The city's share for the entire project will be $23,694. Total grants, $117,560.
Put water and sewer down there, our cost will be $23,000 something, the grant will cover $117,000 or something. But that's going to be a big, big boost for us down there, 24 full-time jobs.
It's going to be like it back in the summer. How much did you say, $23,400?
It's an eighty-twenty grant.
What was the reason for the reluctance? Was it something in our part?
I think the company, no, it wasn't ours, the company, they did that with several places they were going to build, they just, I don't know, they kept putting it off because they made their mind up if they were coming or not. So when the time ran out, we'd have to ask for an extension from the DECA, and we had to ask for another extension from the DECA, but this time, they got everything nailed down with the owners right in Dallas, Texas, and they are coming, so.
Two extensions or three?
Ed, I'm not sure, it might be three, it's at least two. It was, this has been going on for months, six, eight months.
Started under Mayor Halliday, I posted this email that I was looking at, it's August the 30th, 2011, from NACOD, to Mayor Halliday.
Like I say, it would have not been built that day, you know, when they started, you know, they just didn't, for whatever reason, they just didn't do it.
Yeah, it was, it was announced back then.
Yeah.
And they may have announced that either to Mayor Halliday or Mayor Cheryl, I don't remember, but I know that it was, it's been discussed.
Ongoing for a long time.
And the reason, Tim, that it hadn't been approved until now is because it was extended, because you'd be wound up paying them for work regardless if it was done.
Again, we know what's coming.
It's coming now, so, that's the reason you got it on the mound, you really wouldn't vote on it before. So is there a motion to approve this? And we can approve this without signing the contract. What we do tonight is we approve the resolution, and we find out 100% sure, do we sign the contract?
Already been had to vote into applying for the grant. Well, we've got the plans, we've got all...
You got the plans, you're involved.
Everything's there, you know, I mean, y'all did, but the previous administration did to fly forward. I make the motion to approve this resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Is there any other discussion? On the favor, say aye. Number raised, a recommendation to purchase a police dog for $17,237. This has been an ongoing project for a few months now, and really kind of gained speed over the last two, three weeks. This was a goal that we wanted to have, didn't know if and when that's what happened, but through some generous donations and hard work of several people, including Ms. Frances Knight and our chief Ronnie Vickery, they've been several folks that donated toward this project, without calling their names, it was over $13,000, $14,000 donated to it. And we have other funds in our drug count to finish paying for this, but this is a very big, big, going to be asset for us, it's going to be something I think will definitely help us down the road, if it keeps one or two kids off of drugs, for drug prevention, it'd be worth it no matter how much it costs. But this time, Ronnie, I'd like for you to speak on this, and if anybody has any questions, or you know, say any questions for you, I know you've researched this and tell us about the dog, and you've looked at it, just give us your thoughts on it.
Yes, just, and like you said, it was a program that had started, I think, during the last administration, an account that was, a private county was set up and started collecting donations for, like you said, a couple of weeks ago, we were able to obtain, I guess you'd call a windfall of donations at a pretty quick time, and it met the needs that we needed to be able to purchase the dog. We've been to Northside where the K9 school is, we looked at it, Zach Langston, here's Knight, he's going to be a member, took him with us, we made a choice of a male, an Alamo, ten months old, it's going to be trained, it's in the process of being, having so begins training done, it's Alabama born, here or well, in Tuscaloosa, Northside. The full purchase, we put it on hold and we expect him to go to school, 22nd, 22nd of this month, it'll include... It'll include five weeks schooling with the dog. It'll be a dual-purpose dog. It'll be a drug dog and a tracking dog where it'll be utilized in tracking escapees. It'd be used in tracking lost children, you know, Alzheimer patients, any, anybody that, you know, that walks off. If we need, you know, search and rescue, we could use it with it as far as doing some tracking. We'll be able to use it in schools. As far as drug detection, we'll be able to use it as search warrants, traffic stops, so on and so forth of that nature.
Comments or questions?
This officer that has, gonna have the dog, he's, he's gonna be a regular patrol officer. He still do his duties, correct?
Yes, you just have a dog with him, like he has his flashlight with him.
Ma'am?
Did, uh, did you ever get in contact? Did you ever talk to, uh, Dan about your liability?
I did. He told me that he believed it was Big Cooper. And if I didn't hear back from him, everything's okay, so I haven't called me back.
Zach, would you like to come forward unless somebody, let's meet you and just, we're not gonna ask you a bunch of questions. Let folks see who, who's gonna be handling our dog. It's Zach Langston's back there in the back.
He's gonna learn this dog.
This, this is gonna be, uh, something to be with him quite a bit of time. And we appreciate your coming, Zach. To, to see us and us meet you and, uh... Anybody any questions for Zach?
And when you get, let's see, now the dog's name is going to be...
His name? Good, Alan, Carla? Carmen?
We'd like to meet Carmen.
Okay.
You get back to school. And in one of the stipulations, well, not stipulation, but comments that one of the donors made was that if just one child could be saved from drugs, that it would be well worth what we're putting into it. And, and as we all know, it just flowed everywhere, so we've got to use every token we can to address this. Tell you this is a fine young man, but I'm gonna do us a great job.
Are you planning on staying with us?
Yes, sir.
I've heard rumors that you might be wanting to go somewhere else.
Not that I'm worried.
First I've heard, but you gonna stay with us?
Yes, sir.
What's a big commitment?
Oh, yeah.
I remember one of the kittens had a drugged dog for a few years. It's a lot to be proud of, and it's a big, yes, also a big responsibility, and I know you can handle it.
Why is this man way, way on the verge of getting out of the drug task force?
No, sir.
It's just an extra total?
It's a commitment to enhancing the fight against drugs.
Do what? The laws and medicines have to have one, so it's gonna be...
And, you know, the, the dog could more than pay for itself in drug seizures and, you know, you can find a lot of things with a dog that you can't find in a person sometimes. And sometimes it may be quite a bit of money, drug dealers and stuff, and we get complicated that.
Who's to say, not just with drugs, but lots of things, that that dog could assist us in, in saving a life or just like right after a law came on and the children were missing up north town or someplace. If we'd had that dog right then, there would have been, I mean, we found a loss there. Well, kidnappings and whatever, you know, well, it does happen in a lot smaller towns and big, but...
For Zach, I appreciate you and appreciate your commitment to doing this. You got a lot of animals and you got a, have a passion for something like this, it's a big responsibility. And I know you can do it. Yes, sir. Is there a recommendation to purchase this dog? Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Is there any other discussion? So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Coming to number nine on our agenda, this time I'd like to appoint, uh, Tim Ryan as our next fire chief. Tim Ryan's been filling in for the past month for Barron Winkton after Barron resigned. Has done a great job and I've had a chance to talk with several people. And Tim's had highly recommended by several letters of recommendation. And I've also interviewed all the other officers over there, and this is a decision that I made. And I feel like it's the best decision part of the party. So I want to appoint Tim as fire chief. But what we need to vote on is chief salary. Chief salary, uh, we're gonna do this for six months at 1975 an hour, which is about 50 cents less than what Barron was making until the probation period is up. And at that time, we'll look at everything and adjust the salary needed. But I think Tim did a great job. Tim's been working for the city since 1995. Cause I was on council when he was hired, almost 20 years ago, 18 years ago. And prior to that, and Tim was too, and so was Frances. And prior to that, he was a volunteer firefighter since 1989. He's been around, that's a long time, over 20 years, close to 25 years that he's been around firefighting. And I think he's very well qualified, and I think Tim did us a good job, so. I need a recommendation to approve this salary for six months probation period.
I got one question, Mother.
Sir.
Somewhere down the line, we need to start it right now, if people don't want these jobs, that's the only job that's there. Ain't no falling back, shaking up something else.
That's right.
If, if, if you don't want this job, first speak right now.
We're talking about that.
Man, Tim, a heart-to-heart talk about that.
Cause then, cause in six months, you decide you don't want that, ain't falling back. Now we're...
And how, how made that clear?
I go to block nine, this, I'm not, this talking about fire department, I'm talking about every department. If they not slide, we can't make one.
No problems. Okay, is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Greg, is there a second?
I'll say it.
It's Greg and Jan Williams. Mayor, uh, we'll need to swear Tim in too, we can do it with the technical license.
Okay, sounds good. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to swear, you know, police officers and also Tim, we'll do that too while you're here. This is a very special night for our two new officers. We're very proud to have Antoine Cobb and Eric Zales. They're gonna be going to school when, uh, 28th of this month. And that's, I had last round on 12, 12 weeks. So by the time they get out over in July, June, July, they'll be good and hot and ready to go to work. Very proud of these two young men, they've already done outstanding job. And I've heard nothing but good comments, and Tom, from y'all, so we're looking forward to it. We'll make it official, we done it two weeks ago tonight, was when the storms came through and y'all were busy in the rain and directing traffic and moving brush and all kinds of stuff, but, uh... If you two would come up and Mr. Tim Ryan, if you'd come up also, we'll swear you in too tonight. And Mr. Judge White-Hall will be doing that for us.
Antoine Cobb. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Alabama. I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties of police officer of the City of Hamilton, police department, to the best of my ability. So have you got? I, Eric Zales.
I, Eric Zales.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Alabama. I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties. I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties of police officer of the City of Hamilton, to the best of my ability. So have you got? Repeat after me, I, Tim Ryan.
I, Tim Ryan.
I solemnly swear that I will perform all the duties of, of fire chief of the City of Hamilton.
I will perform all the duties of fire chief of the City of Hamilton.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Alabama. The laws and ordinances of the City of Hamilton. And I will perform these duties as place chief to the best of my ability.
I will perform these duties as fire chief to the best of my ability.
You're on the job.
Glad you, congratulations, Antoine, Eric Zales, and, uh, Tim Ryan. We know you're gonna do a great job. And thank you Judge, Judge Howell for performing the ceremonies for us. Before we have, I'd ask for most adjournments. Something coming up on April the 27th is the citywide cleanup day. As you know, back during the campaign this summer, this spring, we had an annual cleanup day, and it was pretty successful. And we're having another one on April, the 27th. We'll also offer, during that day, there will be free Hamilton Lions Club pancake breakfast at the, uh, New Hamilton United Methodist Church. And it's gonna be from 6:00 to 8:00 a.m. Cleanup will be held after the breakfast. So it's free to come and have the breakfast, eat the pancakes. We'll divide up into groups and go pick up trash from the town. And that's gonna be a good thing, take pride here in town. And we may try to do this twice a year, but we're gonna do it on the 27th. Also remember, uh, we'll also offer the curb side service like we did last time. When you can pick up things, you bring them to the side of the road, we will pick them up for you, uh, that week. And it's things like, uh, house soap, furniture appliances, water heaters, mattresses, carpet rolled up, large toys, empty refrigerators and freezers, brush limbs, less than eight feet long, less than six inches in diameter. There is certain things we cannot pick up, and I'll get you a list of those. But the things you can pick up are things that sometimes you have around your house and you get rid of them, nobody, nobody pick them up for you. We'd be glad to do that, that week. We'll keep you informed on that, but that's gonna be the April 27th. Any other announcements?
The disc golf tournaments, uh, Relay for Light Disc Golf Tournament's gonna be, it's coming Saturday. And they're gonna combine it with the Wesley Smith Memorial Tournament too, and all that been going on in the Aggieland Disc Golf Course starting at what time? 7:30 to 9:00 Sunday, so y'all remember that too. It goes for Greg Collins and Wesley Smith, especially visual. We all really miss him a lot, not like this is a good way to...
Anybody else? Any announcements, anything before adjournment?
Right, the electronic recycling this week.
It is at, uh... At the CDL.
CDL.
By the airport, where you take the test for CDL, there's electronics. That's this Saturday. Recycling, $5 for a TV. $5 for a TV. Anything else you just bring?
Electronics.
Electronics.
The county commission gave approval for it. It's a private company out of town, I can't remember that company, but they currently have a good commission for approval.
Use their facility?
It costs $4, yeah.
$5, I think, for a TV.
But all other electronic equipment's free.
All that old computer monitors and stereo, cell phones.
One time, $5.
Just, just for television sets. Television set, that, that's, that's a $5 fee for it, but everything else is, is free.
There is a ribbon cut tomorrow? No, yeah, tomorrow for, uh, is it One Stop Mall? Stop Market Express, that's in...
No, Stop Market.
Stop Market's in Weston, right? Where Phil Potter bought the new station right there, that's at 12 o'clock. And then this coming Thursday, the Chamber has their ribbon cut with the Chamber and the, uh, Arts Fest, Arts Council. That's at 4 o'clock Thursday at their building. And that's uptown right across from the gas market. That's at 4 o'clock.
Open house from 4 to 6.
Open house from 4 to 6. There's anything else? Okay, we have a motion to adjourn? Anybody wanna go on? Greg, made a motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. There are adjournments.